Good morning and welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. We're glad everyone is here. We're gonna begin with the invocation from Councilman Haney, followed by the pledge. Or actually, Councilman Haney's going to introduce Pastor Mark Donaldson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to introduce Mark Donaldson to give the invocation this morning. He is the lead contemporary pastor at Marvin Methodist Church.
Right.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, Mayor. I'd like to read the scripture from Isaiah sixty-two, verses six and seven, as we enter into a time of prayer. And these words from the prophet Isaiah spoken over Jerusalem offer them for us who love this city and serve it as well. "I have posted watchmen on your walls, Jerusalem. They will never be silent, day or night. You who call on the Lord, give yourselves no rest, and give him no rest, till he establishes Jerusalem and makes her the praise of the earth." Lord God, we come to you in Jesus' name. We're grateful for your presence in our lives and in this place. I'm thankful for all who are here who work to make the city of Tyler a great place to live, a city on a hill. And we pray your favor on the business, on the conversation, and on the work that is done and goes forth from this place. Come, Holy Spirit, we invite you. We humbly pray this prayer out of respect for all people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from August the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, one, Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. We're gonna do the budget presentation a little different this time in that we've done already two presentations of the budget that had been provided to y'all for review and for consideration today. And so today, we're gonna talk a bit about the process for adoption of the budget and the tax rate, as those are processes that are set out by state statute and from checking by the legislature kind of repeatedly as they meet each year. And so we wanted to make sure that you are familiar with it as you go into this. And so the city has, staff has been working on our two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollar budget for operations and capital programs during the past year, from starting pretty much in the February period up to the point we are at today. You've already held as far as the presentation and one public hearing. You'll hold a second public hearing shortly on this budget in order for it to get considered as adoption. The process that you have for oh-one, that is before you, is relatively, is a two-step process. The first part is in relationship to the budget adoption itself. And so with this one, there will be a public hearing that you will open and close. You'll accept a motion on the item, and then there will be a record vote that is taken for consideration of the item. As part of oh-one, for the adoption of the budget, you also have to ratify the tax rate increases that is considered as part of the budget. Anytime that you are raising more than essentially a penny over the amount of revenue that you generated last year, you are going to have to be considered a tax rate increase, no matter even though the rate you actually are adopting is lower than the actual current rate that is, that is, we have. But it is still, as far as in the eyes of the calculations, a tax rate increase. So you have to ratify the tax rate increase that goes into the budget to support the budget, and you'll accept a motion on that one, an item, and take a record vote on that one. And I believe also, there's a public hearing that's considered as part of that as well. Just a few of the highlights that are in this budget. We have, for the police department especially, we're very heavy on public safety and improvements in regards to the processes and resources that they have. We're doing a capital replacement program for tasers and body cams, and so this will be one that will be able to change everything we have for the full department, and not just as material gets old and retired and new items need to be replaced for it. You have two new firefighters that you'll be hiring with this budget, as you continue to increase the amount of firefighters you have to man the different equipment that we have. You'll also be able to purchase two new fire engines. As we've talked about, with supply chain issues, the amount of time that it takes for construction of a fire engine has gone from about twelve months to twenty-four months. And so with this one, this budget year, you're actually getting ahead of the program so that you'll be able, by in two years, have two new fire engines coming in for replacement of existing fire engines versus being, still be behind in relationship to our schedule. And there's also different upgrades to different structures we have, and then also a movement in order to, funding to be able to start moving forward for the demolition of substandard structures that we have here in our community that are outside of our, what we have, traditional low to moderate income areas and where we've typically only handled residential demolition. As you can also see with this one, you see that growth that we've had in our public safety budget. This is on the general fund side of the equation. And so for that one, especially for police and fire, it has continued to grow. And in order to be able to provide the resources and funding necessary for that one, we have been able, built a budget that has been able to equip that. Some of the different parks budget programs, and this one is, most of these are being funded, actually, either through community development block grant funds or your parks fund that you created out at the landfill through your solid waste disposal fee for those outside that essentially are not city customers, but that are using our landfill. And so with these, we have the Rose Ruben Trail Study, the Lindsay Softball Field Renovations, Pollard Park renovations with that one, and Winter's Park, and then PT Coal, which actually is kind of continuing to move forward, and will have an item even on this today's agenda for use of community development block grant funds to move that project forward. In your half-cent capital, half-cent program, which provides for capital improvements, you have, and also what you're putting forward from your general fund and your stormwater maintenance fund, you have a six-point-five million dollars that you're putting for stormwater, which is the highest you've ever put towards stormwater as far as maintenance any fiscal year. And so this is kind of setting a record amount. We look to continue to see what we can do to improve that, as drainage is a major issue that we have throughout our community. You also continue to invest heavily in our water and our wastewater system in order to continue to make improvements, and from everything from, as far as the water treatment process to the wastewater treatment process and everything in between, in order to make sure that that is good and safe for our community. We continue, even with the tax rate that we are recommending of twenty-six-point-one-eight-five, half the lowest tax rate in the state of Texas for cities over fifteen thousand in population. And so this is one to where we look, are very competitive with our property tax rate. And every dollar that we collect, because we do not have any portion of our tax rate that is, goes towards interest and sinking or debt, every dollar that is collected from property taxes goes into maintenance and operations for our city programs, for our citizens. We also have with this one, that you'll consider with oh-three, different as far as fees that will be adjusted. With this one, utility rates, the uniform volumetric rate process that, it's a five-year kind of phase-in that we're doing. The first year of that begins this coming year. And so that one will be an item that will be considered with oh-three. You will also have with oh-three, the proposed rate increase of four, of a dollar twenty-eight for residential collection, which is the second year of a two-year phase-in that we were doing, to increase the amount of that beyond CPI, to be able to cover the cost of solid waste services. And so with that, I'm going to actually, we have, oh-two is the next one. But with that one, do we want to take oh-two first, or do you want me to go through oh-two, or oh-one first, or do you want me to go through oh-two as well?
Go ahead and go with oh-two.
Okay.
No vote on separate.
So oh-two, and I mentioned earlier about a property, or a public hearing you need to do on the tax rate, and that's actually with oh-two. So oh-one, you need to do a public hearing for the budget. But then for oh-two, you will do, conduct a public hearing for the tax rate adoption. Then you'll have to do a motion and a record vote for that adoption of that. And again, the tax rate that we are recommending, which is actually lower than your existing tax rate, twenty-six-point-nine-nine cents, is twenty-six-point-one-eight-five-zero cents per hundred-dollar valuation. And again, your tax rate, and you look at just as far as how it has kind of gone out through over time, and then as far as what we compare to, we continue to have a rate that is lower than any other of our, any other cities, especially over fifteen thousand in population. All right. And so with that, I then turn it back over to the mayor. I think we have kind of some notes here to kind of assist with that. The first piece for oh-one, the public hearing. And any questions, I guess, as well, the council may have?
Any questions for City Manager before we proceed?
No.
All right. We will now open the floor for a public hearing on the city's proposed budget. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone out in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak to this item? I see no one, so we will close the public hearing. As we, as we go forward, I want to make sure we do this correctly, so we don't get that look from Deborah. So there is, there is script down here as far as the proper way to make the motion. So is there a motion for this, for oh-one?
So moved.
If you can read the script.
Oh, yes. I move to adopt the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three annual budget, adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two budget amendments, and authorize the city manager to execute particular outside agency contracts budgeted for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, we're going to do a record vote on the council. District one, council member Stuart Haney.
Aye.
District two, council member Broderick McGee.
Aye.
District three, council member Shirley McKeller.
Aye.
District four, council member James Nguyen.
Aye.
District five, council member Bob Westbrook.
Aye.
District six, council member Brad Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Don Warren.
Aye.
Is there a motion to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget?
Mr. Mayor, I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, a second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All right, we will also take a record vote on this item. District one, council member Stuart Haney.
Aye.
District two, council member Broderick McGee.
Aye.
District three, council member Shirley McKeller.
Aye.
District four, council member James Nguyen.
Aye.
District five, council member Bob Westbrook.
Aye.
District six, council member Brad Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Don Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna move to agenda item oh-two. This will be to request to adopt the property tax rate ordinance. Once again, we will open up the floor for a public hearing. Once again, we don't have any cards. Is there anyone out there that wishes to speak on this item, oh-two? Seeing nobody coming forward, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on item oh-two?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point-two-six-one-eight-five-zero, which is effectively a six-point-nine-six percent increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Once again, we will take a record vote from the council. District one, council member Stuart Haney.
Aye.
District two, council member Broderick McGee.
Aye.
District three, council member Shirley McKeller.
Aye.
District four, council member James Nguyen.
Aye.
District five, council member Bob Westbrook.
Aye.
District six, council member Brad Curtis.
Aye.
Mayor Don Warren.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. City Manager, Kedrick, all the staff, thank you all for working with everyone to make this budget as good as it is, and we just appreciate your efforts. So, good job.
Appreciate you all, too.
We thank you, the council. I mean, y'all could give quite a bit of feedback and just as far as different opinions and ideas to us that we take and look at and work through. And so we appreciate just everything that y'all are involved in and the guidance that y'all give through this. And we're not done yet. And so there's one more step to this.
One more.
And so for the oh-three, which is not as complicated a process for adoption, but it is something that impacts all of our citizens and customers in relationship to different fees that we have. And so, Kedrick, if you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, you have item oh-three before you. This ordinance is basically all the other fees that we're increasing in addition to the property tax that you just did. Some of these fees are, you know, in water utilities and development services, but basically you have a request that city council consider adopting an ordinance, amending and updating fees and applicable adjustments to Tyler City Code, Chapter Six, relating to building and structures, Chapter Eight, related to parks, and Chapter Sixteen, related to solid waste, and Chapter Nineteen, to water and sewer. And most of all of these have been covered in the budget presentation, so I'm not gonna bore you with any details. But the, the fire changes are related to the building and structure changes that they've made over the past couple council meetings. There's various fees there, the details included in your packet, the solid waste, as we mentioned earlier, a dollar twenty-eight increase. And then water utilities, we're also looking at regulatory compliance fee increase. And we're moving to a uniform structure on our volumetric rates. We, it's a five-year phase-in. In the fifth year, those rates will be uniform at that point in time, but they will gradually increase each year as we come back and ask for you to approve those. Also, another major change is, as City Manager mentioned, stormwater fee, we're gonna increase that from six to seven percent. And also, with next year's budget, we may be bringing a different structure on how we wanna charge for stormwater. As you all know, stormwater is a, a problem here in the city that we need to address, and we need to get the funds to address those issues. Also, parks, the major deal there, that is really cemetery, we're charging a fee for ground cremation burials on top of existing plots. In the past, we have not charged for those, so we're gonna charge for those going forward. So it is recommended that city council consider adopting ordinance, amending and updating fees and applicable changes to Tyler City Code, Chapter Six, related to building and structures, Chapter Eight, parks, sixteen solid waste, and nineteen water and sewer.
Any questions for Kedrick?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve oh-three.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh-four.
Oh-four.
Don't leave.
I got excited about the budget. I forgot about oh-four. Okay, so oh-four, this is an annual investment policy. We're required to bring this to you all every year. Very, very minor changes, but we're still required to bring it to you all. It's a request that city council consider conducting an annual investment policy review and approval of ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter Two, adopting the investment policy. Basically, the change that we made here is we changed account, replaced an accountant with treasury manager as our investment officer. So having said that, it is recommended that city council consider reviewing and accepting the attached ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter Two, adopting the investment policy.
Any questions for Kedrick?
Move to approve oh-four.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick. M-one, Ms. Dietz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item M-one before you is an engineering services contract for the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Filters eleven through fourteen rehabilitation project. So the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant uses sixteen dual-media rapid sand filters. It's been more than twenty years since the filter media has been replaced in eight of the sixteen filters. And eight of the sixteen filters, there is, the original clay underdrain is also there, which was installed in nineteen sixty-five. So filters one through four were rehabbed several years ago. Filters five through eight were rehabbed in two thousand twenty-one and in twenty-two. So this project's going to include filters eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. It'll include full rehab, the underdrain, the media, and the surface wash system. The consultant selected is KSA. The cost of the work is four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, five-hundred dollars, and our anticipated completion of design is March of two thousand twenty-four. And as you can see on the pictures there, that's kind of a before and after of a filter being rehabbed. So the recommendation is, I recommend that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, five-hundred dollars with KSA engineers with the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Filters eleven through fourteen rehabilitation project.
Any questions for Kate?
Hey, Kate, when a filter is replaced, how long does it last before it needs to be replaced again?
Well, these, these filters have lasted quite a while. Industry standard typically for media is about seven to ten years. So we're, we're past that. Underdrains typically last anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years. So.
Any other questions for Kate?
Move to approve M-one.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M-two.
All right, well, M-two is actually a root removal program for the consent decree, roots one through four. So in line with some recommendations made by Pipeline Analysis, our consultant for the consent decree, one of their remediation recommendations is for root control, specifically chemical root removal. Roots get into the, especially our clay sewer lines very easily and can cause all sorts of blockages and issues. And a chemical treatment such as this one, which is Duke's Root Control, is, is very effective at killing those roots, and then they kind of slough away. And it makes it so it's kind of a, I guess you might wanna call it like a non-invasive way of clearing up our sewer lines. So there were recommendations included in groups one through four for chemical root, root removal in four-hundred, forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-six linear feet of six-inch to forty-two-inch diameter sanitary sewer lines. So this is for a Duke's Root, Root Control Byboard Agreement, six-three-five-twenty-one. The project cost is one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five-ninety-eight. And the reason we want to do byboard for this is because we need to get it done quickly and effectively, because it's, again, we've done a lot of work on groups one through four construction-wise. But this right-of-way clearing agreement that you all saw last, last council meeting and approved, we need to coordinate that so we can access some of these areas, so that we can get that Duke's Root Removal into some of those lines. So I request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for Chemical Root Control Service, TASB Byboard Contract Number six-three-five-twenty-one, with Duke's Root Control, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents for the consent decree root removal program, groups one through four.
Any questions for Kate?
For consent decree work, this is a bargain.
So I guess that's a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve M-three.
Second.
Or is this two, I'm sorry?
M-two. Okay, got a motion by Curtis, second by Jane, or by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're getting a little too friendly. M-three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and Council. Thanks to an additional community development block grant, we have found some additional funding to make some much-needed renovations over at PT Coal Park, which is located at one zero-zero-one South Line Avenue. It's up there on your screen. We're looking to update the restrooms, add a spray ground, and some sidewalks for better connectivity, replacing the pavilion and the playground, as well as renovating the basketball court. We have consulted with MHS Planning and Design, and they feel very confident that they can make this project happen in the very tight timeframe that we have, which is at the end of January. So our recommendation is that we request the city council to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with MHS Planning and Design to prepare PT Coal Park design plans in the amount of one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Any questions or comments for Leanne?
What has to happen by the end of January? Just the design?
No.
All of it?
Yes, sir.
I was getting after it.
We've already been working kind of on, behind the scenes on some things and ordering some things.
Move to approve M-three.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M-four.
I am presenting to you the annual price agreement for city parks for various services and repairs. We put a notice out to bidders for these services on July twenty-eighth and August fourth in the paper. We also advertised on social media to try to get as much feedback as we could from companies to bid. We opened the bids on August the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Some of these services include those that you see on the screen, along with those that submitted a bid. And I think most of you have these all in your packet. This annual service agreement actually allows staff to call the primary contractor and assign a project, which most times are time-sensitive projects or repairs. This will also save the staff time on calling to get bids, additional bids for services. So it is recommended that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number two-two-zero-four-two for the annual price agreements for city parks and services and repairs to the first, second, and third bidders.
Any questions for Leanne? All right, this is our next-to-last action item, so I'd love to show Leanne how enthusiastic we can be with a motion and a second. So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve M-four.
That was not very enthusiastic. Okay, one more, one more time.
Move to approve M-four, Leanne.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Nguyen, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Okay, this is gonna be good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're down to, we're down to the consent agenda. Anything that needs to be pulled?
Move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Manager's report.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Y'all weren't so excited about consent items. So a few items for the council before y'all go into, we move into work session. The first item is on sales tax. So, sales tax, we just had a whole budget adopted today, and forty-six percent of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax. And so we do get those numbers in every month. And one of the things that we did for this past month, or for just this week, we received what would be the figures for our, essentially what we submitted for September. And so that goes back then to where actually sales were like in July of this year. And so sales tax figures available from the Texas Comptroller's website for our sales tax revenues for Tyler are four-point-seven million dollars. And this compares to revenues of four-point-four million dollars for the same period of last year. And so the actual increase for the month-to-month comparison was about five-point-one-five, five percent increase. And so we continue to see sales tax do well for us, although at the same time, not knowing what the future brings, we did budget about a one-point-five percent as far as increase on sales tax for next fiscal year. So we hope to, to have budgeted well and receive even better. A couple of other things I want to just brag about on our police department. We're excited to have the opportunity to promote two officers last Friday. We want to congratulate Assistant Chief Eddie Sheffield and Sergeant- We want to congratulate Assistant Chief Eddie Sheffield and Sergeant Lydia Thedford as they start the next chapters of their career. We're looking forward to seeing amazing things that they'll be accomplishing, and so both of them have done an incredible job and we're glad to see them kind of move forward in the police department with their leadership for our officers. And finally, I saw Patrick back there a minute ago, and he didn't know we were going to brag on him, but it was where our Tyler Fire Department did participate in one of the recent, as far as the combat challenge. And so they put together a team this past weekend and brought home 11 medals. They did amazing. Members included Terry Hawkins, Patrick Mayo, Scott Dodgen, Jordan Richardson, and Joseph, I think Busher's last name, but Mohica, or Mojica. And so I'll talk to the chief later on, he'll tell me which way it was. Third-place team individuals with Jordan and Scott and Joseph running for the first time. And so Patrick made the lion's den, I don't know if he wanted me to tell his year, but it was listed here, at 43-year-old with a time of 1.5, 1.59. And so Terry placed second over 50 in that category for tandem, and Veterans Relay placing third. And so proud of these guys representing the Tyler Fire Department, they did an outstanding job out there for us. And so, good job on that. And though we typically don't sing at council meetings, I'm not suggesting we do, I do want to note that today is Chief David Cobal's birthday, and so we say happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
There we go.
Oh, no. Chief Cobal, you've been asked to come up here just real quick.
Come on, chief.
No, this is going to not be good. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll add on the agenda.
Well, we just want to say happy birthday. We're not going to ask how old you are, but we're glad you're here.
Well, thank you. I am blessed to be here, and I am thankful that you guys recognize me.
Would you like us to sing happy birthday?
No.
Okay. Thank, thank, thank you for coming forward. All right. Any comments or questions for the city manager before we adjourn?
I, I just want to say, City Manager, thank you for the overlay that's happening in District three, and my streets are looking really well out there, and thank you so much.
Yes, it's, we've got quite a bit of street activity going on, and so I'm glad yours are turning out quite well. You know, it's, I do feel for your neighbor there, Captain Curtis, for, as far as Cambridge, which is a two-year project, and people kind of forget that it's, it takes a full shoot years for that whole project, so.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are, hold on here, a second.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.